This conference will now be recorded.
I'll pull the meeting to order. The time is 9:03. It's a special meeting of the Sylvan County Township Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, November 24th. And the purpose of the meeting is to review the budget hearings for 2021. Mr. Simko, would you do the role?
Yes, Mr. Genowine. Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Crandall?
Here.
Mr. Simko here. Genowine didn't answer.
Would you follow me along on the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll go into the budget hearings and the procedures. We'll go through the road department, fire, police, and general fund. Mr. Turner will give us a brief overview and may or may not call on the department head. And then we'll, what I'd like to do is add 4.5 if there's any questions of the public. But I'd rather take it as one thing at the end of the meeting rather than by department. So I'll add 4.5 for comments from the citizens. And then when we go, let's take the first department. Mr. Turner will give us an overview of the department head if necessary. I'll call on myself and Mr. Mahoney. And then Dave, if we could at the end, I'd like to get your comments on all the departments together, if that's okay. Is that okay with you, Dave? I don't know if you're involved in this process at this point or not, but I think I'd like to get your input before we take the citizens' comments.
Hey, John Crandall? Hey, John?
Yes.
Hi, it's Neil.
Yeah.
Did you say you want us to wait till the end at 4.5 to ask questions?
No, 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 not us.
Okay.
I'm going to call on the citizens in case they have a question.
Okay.
Or the listeners may have a question.
Sounds great.
I'm just trying to do it to effectively get through the hearings. Now, I'm going to call on you now for each department. Okay, we'll start off here, the road department. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the trustees, elected officials, fiscal officer, taking the time for the special meeting today, the hard work of the department heads and the management team, and our fiscal department with Vicky Alsba and Imron Merzon. The budget, as the trustees know, is one snapshot in time, an important one. But on a day-to-day basis, I know we're all very cognizant of managing the township's budget prudently. And to start us off, we have an overview of the road and bridge fund for 2021, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st. And if you're able to view the screen as you follow along, you'll see that between January 1st of 2017 and what is projected for January 1st of 2020, the road and bridge fund has stayed consistent and predictable in terms of its fund balance and its revenues. The fund itself has maintained a fund balance ratio of roughly 128%, which indicates that there are sufficient resources to accommodate unexpected circumstances. And as with each fund, the projections are conservatively developed each year. The estimates for January 1st of '21 and '22 are conservatively developed. And at the bottom, the budget performance indication shows that for the 2020 year, the current year we're in, that will end in a position that was roughly projected at the beginning of the year. So an encouraging note on the administration of the fund. Revenue-wise, revenues from Lucas County are projected to remain consistent between this year and next year with an increase just under 1%. And the total budget showing revenues of roughly $2.545 million. Future considerations which may impact the fund more than others, potential annexation, and of course, the age of the infrastructure. I know that Superintendent Nash does a good job with keeping up with capital preventative maintenance and investing in infrastructure and maintaining roads. And across budget categories, we know that the road and bridge fund has a fair amount of variation in terms of its expenditures. So between material maintenance and highway improvements, depending on which fund capital projects derive their funding from, these expenses can vary. But as shown by the fund balance slide, the fund has maintained consistency and helps to helps to provide the resources necessary to invest in the infrastructure that our citizens have come to expect. And with that, just the brief overview of the fund. I know that Superintendent Nash is on the call to answer any questions that the trustees may have in regards to the particular allocations proposed.
Okay, Mr. Mahoney, do you have any questions on the road and bridge fund?
Sorry about that, it took a minute to click. Right now, I don't, but thanks for asking.
All right. And I assume Mr. Genowine's not on the call yet. All right, so my comment, I only don't have one. This is an awful tight fund. And in the long range, I know we should have a better facility for the department. I don't know how we're ever going to address that. But my concern is, I can't tell from here how many miles we're doing. And I'm wondering, Oliver, if you could have Rob for yourself follow up. I'd like to know, how many miles did we pave? No court hearings, but how many miles have we paved each year in the last three years? And then how many miles are we going to do this year projected for 2021? My guess is we're awful tight here. But I couldn't really tell it from the figures. Could you do it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we can certainly pull that information together for the board.
Well, and then, yeah, be sure to send it to the entire board. Mr. Simko, do you have any comments on the road and bridge fund?
No, I don't.
All right, we'll move on to the fire department. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm working to pull up the screen for the slides on the fire fund. And again, appreciate the input of the department heads. I know that the chiefs and administration within the fire department have invested a lot of time in this budget. And taking a look between January 1st, 2017, and January 1st, 2022, as you can see, the projected position of the fire fund has remained stable. That's with the caveat that the figures shown on this slide take into account the adoption and support from the community of the 1.9 additional mill, which was recently approved by the voters of Sylvan Township. In the absence of that levy, we would have been looking at a fund balance on January 1st, 2022 of just over $240,000, notwithstanding any additional revenues that would be received. So the support of the levy certainly goes a long way to ensure that the fire department is able to continue to provide the services necessary, respond to calls and incidents, and prepare for the future. You know, over the past five years, calls have increased roughly 35%. And we understand that that rate will continue in the long term. But just looking at the position on January 1st of each year, we are projecting a fund balance of roughly 34.8%. And the target benchmark that many professional organizations recommend is to have a fund balance ratio of between 20 and 25%. So it will be on proper footing to continue to provide the services. Again, the information in the allocations and appropriations coming forward do not include the revenue from the fire levy and do not include reimbursements from the coronavirus relief fund. There is approximately $1.176 million being reimbursed from the federal distribution for public safety functions, given the fire department's significant role in mitigating the COVID-19 pandemic. Again, the conservative approach used by administration, we projected that we would end this current fiscal year with over $1.9 million reserve balance, and we're projecting that it will end with $2.5 million. Moving on to the next slide, again, these 2021 county budget rates do not include the additional levy revenues due to the timing of how we are required to certify our revenues to Lucas County. So it's notwithstanding the levy, you're looking at roughly a 1.8% increase in revenues, which of course, the millages derived from both the unincorporated portion of Sylvan Township and the city of Sylvan. In terms of overall revenues, we're looking at roughly $9.854 million in revenues. And future considerations, a continued increase in incidents, the need for succession planning, and staffing that is proposed based on the levy. And the fire department is working to bring on the next cohort of three additional hires, which was proposed during the levy within the first part of next year. Overall expenditures, you're looking at an increase from nearly $11.4 million in 2020 to $12.1 million in 2021, with the increase in expenditures having been communicated during the levy campaign, the additional staffing, and the capital investment in infrastructure, which has been planned. At this point, I'll turn it over to the fire department for any comments they may wish to offer. Thank you.
Any comments, Chief?
No comment for me. Or did you say Chief or Dave?
Chief, Chief. I'm assuming Chief Ramsay or...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm not feeling very well. So Chief Nye and...
No problem, no problem.
Chief Nye and Jennifer. Yeah, Chief Jennifer, Chief Nye and Jennifer are on. So I'll turn it over to them because I'm not sure if I'll be able to speak enough without coughing, so.
Good, well. Chief Nye?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You've got the documented budget that we've proposed that would include additional hiring of the three that were included in the levy. And we've also proposed, we have an expected retirement likely in February, speaking with Administrator Turner. And he concurred that it would be likely in our best interest to minimize our overtime expenditures and to more effectively train the oncoming staff to add that additional person in and make that a hire of four, likely early January sometime. The other items that are included in there are a, in the 228 fund particularly, is a replacement ambulance for one of the medic units that's seeing the end of its service life. We've got some information yesterday, so that we're looking at approximately a 10-month build time on those, which is about four months longer than typical. No different than the fire truck that we're going to be proposing, the December 15th trustees meeting to take advantage of some cost savings. They're out 15 to 18 months, typically their one year. So we're feeling some pressures from this whole COVID pandemic with getting our infrastructure and our capital needs taken care of in a more timely fashion. So with that delay, we're likely going to have an ambulance, a lease-to-purchase again, similar to the other two that we're doing for trustees' consideration on the December 15th meeting.
Question, do we, when we buy a vehicle, do we pay at the end? Or how does, do we give a deposit, or how does that work?
Well...
First two, we put $50,000 down.
Right, for the ambulances specifically, those were lease-to-purchase, and we put down approximately $50,000 down. And then within, at the end of a five-year term, we actually will own that vehicle.
Got it.
And then the fire trucks, we pay at the end.
Got it. So a question on the original budget, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Sure, go right ahead.
So what's our burn factor after the levies are put in is about $2 million a year? Is that what, is that kind of my rough math?
Could you give us a little bit better explanation on that?
Me or Oliver?
You.
No.
If you went to the first slide, Oliver, do you mind going to the first slide?
Absolutely, I'll pull it up.
Thanks. Just, yeah, just so I'm clear on what you said for the estimates we're not including, that's for 2021 and 2020, that's the COVID and the additional... So the end of, just so I'm covered here, the end of 2021, that's what we had in our account prior to asking for the citizens for the levy, correct?
Right, so this slide presentation, the January 1, 2021 figure, the $2.507 million, that does not include the additional levy revenues annually of $2.8 million and does not include the coronavirus relief fund reimbursements.
Okay, so if you add the, if you add the $2.507 and the $2.804, and then go back to what our, can you get to the next? And maybe I'm wasting everybody's time here, I apologize. But if you look at the proposed, okay, the proposed revenues of 2020 is 96 revenue. And then the budget is 11.3 in expenses in 2020, we'll use 2021. $9.84 is revenues, the budget is 12.1, so our burn factor is $3 million. Am I missing that? Am I missing something there?
So I'll go to... Here is the all-fire fund. And this is the actual, the actual allocations which would be presented to the trustees for consideration. This for 2021 shows the revenue of $9.854 million.
Right.
And with the expenditures, you're looking at total expenditures of $12.1.
Right, so it's about $3 million burn per year.
Yeah, you're looking at roughly $2.3 million.
Okay.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, it's Chris, Chris, call me Neil, please.
I think what, maybe what you're trying to ask is the expected revenue that Mr. Turner was just showing doesn't include the new revenue from this levy.
Ah, okay.
But the expense line item does.
Got it, okay, enough said. Okay, cool, that's where I was going, that's where I was going.
Neil, I had a similar question. And I've got the hard copy, and it sounds like the slides are slightly different. But my question was, what's our target? Is it, now on the levy, I heard four years, six years. What is our long, do we have a long-range target or a projection? That, because I have a burn rate similar to yours, not exactly the same. But I'm wondering, it looks to me like at the most, we can do six years, is that? Because maybe we haven't looked at that yet.
Mr. Chairman, if I may answer that question?
Sure.
I believe that four would be the minimum number of years that could be expected. I think five would be within reason. And I think six, I believe six years would also be within reason, provided there are no unforeseen circumstances which require significant outlay. I think that either four or five years would, based on what I know, be the most likely scenario. But that's my assessment. Chief Nye, if you'd like to weigh in as well?
Obviously, none of us could predict the future. So I think, you know, four was where we were at. Five is probably going to be very comfortable. Six, you know, we'll have to evaluate as we get closer to that. You know, we don't know how this pandemic is going to play out, how long it's going to be around. Additional growth of the community could necessitate some changes in operations with perhaps additional staffing or capital outlay for apparatus.
I would say that we're definitely comfortable with four to five. And then we, as we go along, we can tweak some things. And, you know, six is not a, not out of the question, I guess is the way I would say it. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions, Mr. Mahoney?
I do not, but thank you.
Chief, I'm looking at the overtime. And I can understand why we had it this year. Well, two questions. One, as I see, we still got part-time salaries. I thought we were not going to have that. Am I missing something here?
The only two, the only two part-time staff members that we have currently on the fire department and any plans for are the fire inspectors, civilian fire inspectors.
Thank you. But don't you answer, Chris? I don't want you getting any worse. And then, Chris, the lease principle, we're leasing one ambulance. And it looks to me like we're going to lease the second one. And while I understand that, I'm wondering if we could just take those out of the general fund and then pay the general fund back. We get very little interest on the bank accounts. And I don't know if you know the interest rate we're paying on the lease, but I think we could help the general fund and pay less than we're paying now. But Mr. Simko would have to get his thoughts on that.
Well, currently, we're actually actively leasing two. And we'll be proposing to lease a third. And we could certainly explore that option. That'd be up to the trustees and Mr. Simko. I don't believe we have a large, I want to say it's less than 5%. We don't have that number right on top of us because they were, both of them are at a slightly different rate just because of when they were purchased or leased. But it is less than 5%. So I guess that would be up to the board.
I think the question ought to be, Oliver, is can we co-mingle funds where we're the bank for fire, police, you know, can we act as a, can we act as a lease of the bank for those? Is that co-mingling of funds?
Yeah, that's my question, Neil.
Okay.
But maybe Oliver and Mr. Simko could follow up with us all and let us know if that's possible.
That's a great idea, John, because, you know, maybe we charge 3% and still save the citizens of, you know, we could still, whatever that number would be, but it'd have to be, whatever the number, if it's less than five, if we could legally do that, that'd be, that could be a win-win for both parties here. Good thinking.
The other thing I'm wondering about, Oliver, we use $5,000 as a capital expense. But I've noticed sometimes we're purchasing multiple pieces of equipment, and it's over $5,000. But I would, I would think it's, in my mind, it's the one item for capital. Like certainly a truck, certainly a fire station. But let's say we purchase new air gear or something, and the purchase is over $5,000. But I think each unit probably is under that. It just seems to me, and maybe I'm wrong, I'd like to have you get back to me and the other elected officials. But it doesn't seem to me that that should be under capital when it's multiple units. And maybe we could have a different limit there. But that's just, when we're buying air packs and things, like helmets and tools, the total bill may be over $5,000. But it seems to me like that's not capital in my mind. But maybe it has to be, but oh, I don't know. Maybe you have that answer right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To backtrack a touch on the inter-fund loan discussion, this is something that I held brief discussion with Attorney Burrell regarding in the past. He seemed open-minded to the discussion. It wasn't ruled out out of hand. That's certainly something administration can follow up on. In terms of the capital equipment, as opposed to whether they're funded out of capital or operating expenses, you know, I would actually defer, I don't know, Imron or Vicky, if either of you would like to weigh in on this point.
Oh, this is Vicky. As far as the equipment purchases, it has to be over the $5,000 and have, I'm trying to think, what is it, a five-year life sustainability to fall under capital projects?
But...
So if the equipment is going to last five years or more, it could be, we can charge it to capital.
No, I get that. But in my mind, no, I get what you're doing. But sometimes the individual piece of equipment is far less than... All I see is we're buying 24 pieces of equipment, and here's the bill. But it seems to me that's not capital when it's backpacked. I understand it just comes from a different item in the budget. But capital to me is five years, $5,000 for each individual item.
We can certainly take a further look into that and reassess our procedure if necessary.
I don't think it's necessary, just let us know, all the elected officials. Mr. Simko, do you have any comments on the fire levy or the fire budget?
No, I don't. I think I previously looked at it, you know, along with all the budgets. And I think it looks like it's a good budget. I do want to comment that I think we should probably...
I do wanna comment that I think we should probably not think, it's, it's hard to think beyond five years. Uh, I think we should be, be, be careful on that. And, uh, we will look into, uh, with the prosecutor and we'll probably, I would think we wanna touch base with the auditor. Uh, it's always good to have legal advice when you do something like that and, you know, supporting what you're doing. But I, it may not be bad to touch, touch base with the audit, the state auditor too about it. But I think it's a good idea because we, we could, uh, it could be a win-win situation for us if we can do this. That's all my and my other comments.
And if I can add to the, um, ambulance lease or purchase versus lease, we would definitely have to check with Mr. Burrell about charging extra. But the proper procedure would be to advance the money from the general fund over to the, um, capital projects for the ambulance and pay cash for it out of the capital projects for the EMS fund and ambulance fund. Not out of the general fund and, and charge like, not like a loan thing. It would have to come out of the EMS fund or the capital projects for the EMS fund. So it really wouldn't be co-mingling money. We would be advancing money to whichever of those funds we were gonna use.
Well, you're gonna get back to us in any way. Maybe it's not possible. I'm just looking for a way to.
Right.
And I know the numbers not big. I get that. But it seems like when we're getting practically no interest at the bank, maybe we should be considering that. Are there any other comments with the fire department? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the police department. Oliver.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will share the screen with the police slides. And so with the police fund, as you can see, much like the road and bridge fund, uh, this has remained consistent over the course of the past five fiscal years included in the presentation with the fund balance of roughly 5.3 million, January 1st, 2017, and an estimated fund balance of 5.434 million at the end of this year. Uh, we are projecting a decrease over fiscal year 21. But as with the other funds, we do estimate our budgets conservatively. And the budget performance for the current fiscal year 2020, uh, we were estimating that we would end with a balance of about 4.2 million and projecting that balance of 5.4 million. Now, as the trustees will remember, uh, during the last budget, there was a projected increase in healthcare expenditures of roughly 28 to 33%, depending on the type of plan, as well as a 27th payroll, which, uh, you know, did not need to be paid out this year. So that does speak to some of the variation and the difference in budget performance figures. But again, it is estimated conservatively. Uh, in terms of the police fund, the county budget rates were showing the revenues staying fairly consistent. Um, moving with the revenue in amount of 7.63 million. And total revenues, uh, projected at just about 7.6, which I'd like to confirm that figure, uh, doesn't make sense that the proposed revenues would be less than the budget rates, but I'll double check that. Feature considerations, annexation, dispatch consolidation is, remains on the horizon. Uh, this budget does not reflect any, um, decreased operating expenditures, which would come from dispatch consolidation, but does plan for, uh, the different types of accrued leave payouts, which would be contractually associated with that. In terms of the budget, the total expenditures, 8.539 million in expenditures as compared to 8.47 in expenditures current fiscal year. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Chief Long.
All right, there I am. I clicked my mic button there. Um, yeah, just Chief Long, just, um, nothing earth-shattering. I know you guys all have the budget for you. Um, just some generic stuff, you know, we're looking to maintain our staffing levels. We're not looking for any increases in our staffing for coming year. Um, you know, cause Oliver mentioned their consolidation is, it's on the horizon and, you know, without having a complete firm timeline, we're making some plans for some potential expenditures at the end of the year. If the consolidation happens, hopefully by December, um, you know, but that's not firm. So some of those expenses may be this year, some of the savings may be this year, maybe next year. Where we gotta wait and see how that shakes out right now. So we're trying to plan for it, but it's a little tough right now when we don't have a firm date when that's gonna happen, where it's the end of this year or the beginning of, or the, I'm sorry, the end of 2021 or the beginning of 2022. So, but that's certainly in there. Um, we took a look at everything else, took a hard look at everything. Uh, we're, technology expenses are always increasing for us, um, with servers. And we're to the point on some lifespans for some of our in-car cameras and things like that. I know body cameras is a potential issue on the horizon that we're looking at, waiting to see if, what's legislatively mandated and whether or not they'll provide any funding for us if they mandate it. So, you know, I wanna hold off on that a little bit and not jump the gun and, and spend our own money if we can get some grant money or whatever may be out there with the legislature comes up with. So, um, we're using our federal equitable sharing money when we can. I think we've done a pretty good job with that this year, use that for some different things that saved us some money. So overall, I, and I, we've got a capital expenditure plan, um, that, you know, with Mr. Turner, we've all set down all the departments and a five-year plan on that. So we've tried to space out some of the big expenses. Uh, so I think we've done a good job kinda projecting that down the line. Um, anything else? I mean, I think we've done a pretty responsible job, like I said, of trying to maintain and still provide, you know, good service to the citizens. So you guys have any questions?
Oh, I have a question for you.
Sure.
It's Neil. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Great, thanks. So I, I've, I've asked Nancy this question for a lot of years. Uh, but in the, I guess the question is, in the general fund, we have some monies that are expiring that have been applied towards capital improvements. And I remembered last year in the budget, and I, I guess I forgot all about it. But the monies that we've held, been holding for, um, you know, drug raids and things like that, we've got like, I, correct, I, do we have like 300 or 400,000 in that account? And will that, is there, is, will that expire? Does that go back down to the state? Are we able to apply that into the police fund when it expires? Cause I think some of that money is getting fairly close to expiring.
Are you talking about the federal equitable sharing counter? Is this, this, you're talking about something different? Money that's actually in the general fund that came from somewhere?
No, we had, uh, I'm pretty, I, I, I felt we have a fund, I thought we have monies that we apply, that, that when we have drug busts that are applied towards, um, a separate fund to allow us for training, like our dog, we bought the, when we got the dog years ago. We didn't take that out of your fund. We took it out of the, uh, a fund for, um, uh, you know, a, a separate fund for like drug raids and things like that, that we're, we keep, we're able to keep the money on. Um, in a separate account.
If I, may I butt in here?
Yeah, yeah. Sure. Go ahead, Nancy.
I believe he, you are, Neil, talking about our law enforcement trust funds. Those are monies that, they're not expiring, but we're asked to use a certain amount of it every year to keep it active so that it's not just sitting idly. And we are doing that.
Okay, so we are using, I didn't, I didn't know if there was a clock on that, whereas in our general fund, we have a clock.
No.
Earn the money and we, we have to move it.
There is no clock on it. We just need to use it to show that it's not just sitting idly there. And we are using it. It's in the 222, 225, and 232 accounts.
Okay. And then eight, Paul, like if we end up getting stuck on cameras, out of, if, if you decide, if that's what you decide to do, could we use that fund to help pay for those cameras?
Yeah, we could. And that's something we're taking a look at, um, that it's sort of there. It's in the back of my mind that if we have to, it's there. Um, and again, we'll have to see how it gets replenished. But yeah, definitely, that's, that's in my mind, but.
Okay, very good.
I would spend all our 100% of our money on it, be it from that fund or any fund. I wanna wait and see if the legislature, cause I believe if, if they legally mandate it, legislatively mandate it, I think all the things I've heard the governor say, and even the president-elect, I believe that they're gonna, if he mandates it, they're gonna have to see what they can come up with for some funding. So I'd like to help them sharing the cost. I know they wouldn't pay for it all, but, you know.
No, I get it. Okay, great job, you guys. Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Is that, is that it, Neil?
It is. Thanks, John.
Okay. Uh, Chief, I've got a couple of questions. One is, I think there's a number in here on dispatch. That's a new number. I'm not finding it right now. I think it was 180,000 from memory. Does that severance pay in case the, uh, people don't wanna switch to the?
I don't remember if it was quite 180. Vicki, I know you were ten, but Vicki and I talked, um, yeah, we have to allot for the severance. The severance was gonna be around 95, um, for what was agreed to contractually for everybody. And then.
Well, I found this, uh.
Yeah, we're trying to guestimate comp time payouts. And again, we don't know how that's gonna come. You know, you, we, we're trying to guess how many hours would they have, you know, would each person have that? We'd have to clean, you know, pay them out of the books, off our books before they consolidated. So that's kind of a guess. I know Vicki and I were talking.
Yeah, I know. That's not in your control.
Was it? It was in the 140, 150 range? I can't remember.
I see it here. It's 51, 930. They, you don't need to go into that right now, but that's the account number. I just wanted to be sure if I was interpreting what it is. And then I noticed on the phone service, that seems to be jumping quite a bit. But is that because of dispatch or is that? Let me look at, let's see, our amended budget this year was 22,000 and we're budgeting 30 next year. And right now, we're at 13 on that line item. Maybe somebody could just double check that. Be fine with me.
That was under which item?
Uh, phone service.
Okay.
You need the account number. I'll see if I can find it here. It's 51, 355.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, I see it right there.
You can just get, you could just get back to me on that. It's so many deals. The other thing I'm wondering.
I think that may have something to do with our air cards for some of our MDTs. I'll have to double check that, cause that's kinda considered phone. Cause, uh, Lucas County is no longer paying and we are having to assume some costs effective this month, actually, or next month, December 14th, I think it is. So it might have something to do with that, but I'll check that.
That's right. That's right.
It was, um, Chief.
Yeah, go ahead.
And gave Nancy an additional amount to be added to the phone service line for exactly what you were speaking about. And the money for the contingency account was 180,000.
Oh, okay. All right, good. So you did it.
Good.
Excellent. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Uh, now, do, Chief, do you have any guesstimates as to how many years we can go here?
Well, the, the last numbers that, you know, I got there from, uh, from fiscal and everything, um, and this is what I got in June, was showing we'd be deficit spending in 2025. Now, again, consolidation and some of that might have an impact, cause that wasn't factored in when this was originally put together, cause we don't know the true cost of that yet. So, but, um, that would be deficit spending, deficit spending in 2025. So obviously, we'd need to ask for, um, some kind of a levy. And that's where we gotta sit down and see what else is coming on the books, what's going on either in 2023. I would hesitate to wait all the way till the end of 2024, cause if for some reason it didn't pass, then we don't have a, we don't have a fallback. I'd like to do a little sooner. So probably the best estimate would be 2023 would be my guess. So to give us a little cushion there. And we haven't asked for anything since 2004, so.
No, I know. You've done a good job on that.
Yeah.
I'm just worried about two levies back to back.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
And that's not a new comment, but I just wanna be sure we're not putting ourselves in that hole.
Right. So far, we're looking good for probably two or, you know, good, I can say what, 21, two, and three, but we're gonna need to be thinking about it in 23 if we put it on then. Again, depending what other levies are gonna be out there from the township.
And then the, the thing about leasing, we've never leased our cars. But if we can do it for the fire department, maybe that would help us extend a year or so to, to try to not be on the ballot back to back. I don't know what the other elected officials feel, but I think that will be tough for both departments if we're back to back. Um, so I'm hoping we can spread that a couple of years. Any other, uh, Mr. Simcoe, do you have any questions for the chief?
Uh, no, I don't. Uh, they've got a good tight budget.
All right. If not, we'll move on to the, uh, Mr. Turner and, uh, the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, 2021 general fund. So this has remained, as shown on the screen, uh, the fund balance of general fund has remained consistent. In particular, between 2017 and the beginning of this fiscal year, uh, we are projecting an estimate with having a $7.33 million fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. And as noted with the other funds, uh, in particular, fire and police, our budget performance, we do develop conservative estimates. This current fiscal year, we were projecting that we would end with 6.7 million. And we're on track to end with roughly 7.3 million. Uh, much like the information supplied for the fire fund, the information in this PowerPoint differs uh, because it includes revenues at the allocations and appropriations measures would not. So the figure for January 1st, 2021, uh, that is the second figure below the estimate of 7.3 million. That includes the estimate with return of monies in the general fund capital projects fund, which are over 10 years and under statute must be returned to the general fund. We're predicting that at the end of next fiscal year, uh, at the end of December 2021, moving on to January 1st, 2022, that will have an estimated fund balance of 9.74 million, uh, which leaves a fund balance ratio of roughly 404%. Revenues with the general fund in terms of Lucas County budget rates, I'm seeing an uptick to 735,000 from 720,000. Uh, some significant notes, our interest, as was, uh, mentioned during previous discussion by the trustees, interest revenues have decreased considerably, uh, the 2019 actual of about 647,000. We're estimating that, uh, year to date, we've collected 115,500 in interest. And, uh, there's an additional note. I believe as the trustees know, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation has been issuing rebates from its surplus fund. And, uh, at the end of this year, perhaps in the beginning of next year, we'll see an additional amount of at least $350,000 coming into the general fund. That's not reflected in these figures as well. Uh, total revenues, we're looking at a slight decrease of
Of course.
about $22,000 in general fund revenues, uh, which in part owes to the decrease in interest. Uh, general fund expenditures, the health insurance, as has been the case with police fire funds, we're looking at a 13.8% decrease in the maximum annual plan year cost, uh, based on the move to Roundstone as the stop-loss carrier. We're anticipating that the insurance committee and board would continue, uh, implementing those actions previously approved to reduce healthcare expenditures such as the patient advocacy program. We wanted to note, there are some notable expenditures in the general fund, uh, which are likely to not be fully expensed. That includes $60,000 per gasoline under township poll category. 25,500. Uh, 25,500 allocation for state examiner's charges, about $8,000 for the gypsy moth spraying activities, which there's no spraying currently planned for the next year. And we did include $20,000 for nuisance abatement. If a property needs to be demolished or a nuisance otherwise abated, which, uh, you know, would be based on circumstances presenting themselves to the trustees. In terms of budget categories, uh, we're seeing a decrease across each category, ranging from a decrease of 1.9% in the elected officials category to. A decrease in expenditures, uh, just over 15% for the township hall category. Uh, the sources category does reflect roughly 450,500 dollars in expenses for the waste and leaf disposal, as well as the transfer out for capital projects funded by the general fund. Uh, so as trustees are also aware, part of the discussion that we've had in terms of the general fund, uh, we know that for the upcoming year, there is a drawdown of roughly 400 to 435,000, uh, which takes into account the additional expenses for brush and leaf pickup services and also that figure controls for some of those notable expenditures that we don't expect to be, um, fully absorbed during the next fiscal year. But we are, and working with Superintendent Nash, uh, taking a look at past information that he's put together in terms of household pickup costs, which have increased over the past several years. And taking a look at options, uh, policy options for trustee consideration on the leaf and brush pickup services, which as noted previously, cost about 450,000 dollars per year. On the revenue side, uh, we are evaluating marketing voluntary participation in the joint economic development district, uh, opportunities. And then looking at future cost allocations for administration to include wages and fringes in, um, the cost allocations for administrative services, which we didn't, we only included the wages this year, but we are looking at wages and fringe for next year to help close off a portion of the drawdown, looking at cost allocations as well for utilities here at Township Hall and for software such as Paycor. Uh, looking at the other funds. Fund 207, the lighting district, no significant change. The waste and leaf fund 208, uh, as trustees are aware, that's a new fund and is supported by the general fund. Fund 211 coronavirus relief funds, the monies were deposited and will be expensed from this fund for a federal monies being received in light of the pandemic. Uh, we're not currently expecting this would carry over into next year, but it's possible depending on the timing of expenditures and if other, uh, grants or funds are issued by the federal government. Moving through fund 220, senior citizen, there's no significant change, uh, with the services or with the center. And we expect continued stability with that since the levy passage of the point four two mil renewal. Uh, special assessment 240 and bond retirement, no significant change there. And just to touch briefly on the proposed capital investments during 2021, we are looking at improving, um, some of the office elements here at Township Hall, looking at a camera system, security system upgrades, improvements to the foyer and the building. And then additionally, from the capital fund would be setting aside $250,000 for possible property acquisition in the future. Uh, meeting room upgrades in the amount of $12,000 and as a result of our agreement with Pennsylvania Community Services, uh, on the senior citizen building, we are responsible for improvements such as a new roof or, um, more structural oriented types improvements at the senior center. So there is $200,000 set aside for those types of expenditures. And at this point, I would, um, invite Vicky or Imran to make any other comments they may wish to make for administration.
Uh, I've got a comment. Uh, Mr. Crandall, you were asking about those capital assets, uh, that why any item which has got a life of more than 5,000 is included? It's a pretty, uh, it's standard, it, it, it's a pretty accounting, uh, standard that basically that if you aggregate things and they, they've got a life of more than 5,000, that can be classified as, as a capital asset. And I've seen that in the industry pretty much, uh, very consistently. And that is what is exactly happening here too. But if you guys want to change anything, I think so that is acceptable too. But that's pretty consistent with our accounting standards.
Well, it's probably, it bothers me, but I think it's a good idea. Cause we.
Yes, it is a good idea.
Capitals, capitals where we've got money and that helps with the operation. So I'm not that, it just, well, anyway, enough said.
I understand your point, right? I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but people do aggregate like that and then basically, I mean, classify as a capital assets. But it's up to you guys, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry, Enron.
It's up to you guys, you guys can change it.
Any, any other comments from you?
No.
All right, Vicky, do you have any comments?
Um, nope, I don't have anything additional. I think Oliver.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh, move to Mr. Mahoney Neil. Any comments on the general fund?
Nope, um, uh, nope, looks, it looks good. Thanks.
Uh, my comments on that, I, I'm concerned about the capital money. I mean, I know we have to do that or I understand we do if it's not used in 10 years. But that's a pretty good bump to the general fund. And I'm the one that always I guess complains that we're expending more than we're taking in. But I think it bothers me a little bit and I don't know if you can get back to us on this Oliver, but when I see we're moving 3 million, three and a half million to operations in my mind from capital, and I know we have capital needs, certainly at the fire department, uh, with the training tower and the road garage. I don't know how we're ever gonna address that unless we start setting money aside for that effort, but I'm not even sure then we do it. But it bothers me on the amount we're putting into the, uh, I'm wondering if we couldn't put some of this money into, uh, some of our other capital needs. Maybe we can't do that. And, uh, but that's a big chunk of money we're putting into operations in my mind. And I do understand the leaf collection and all the other issues we have. Um, my next comment is on, I'd like to see if start an account for bike and hike and sidewalk, um, uh, projects, cause we can't fund it. I think you can fund the signing in the road department. When you put a sign up, do you watch out for bikes or share the road? I think you can do that with the road money, but I don't think you can do some of the other things we need along the county and state highway system to connect our neighborhoods. And that's been, I'm on my seventh year here. We've never been able to, the, the reason usually is we don't have any money for. So I'd like to see us see if we can set around 50,000 aside for that line item, uh, which is more money from the general fund to the road fund, but I think we need to do that. My last comment Oliver is on the senior center maintenance. Um, isn't that a 50 50 split with the city?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's correct. It's a 50 50 split with the city.
So if we set aside 200,000, that's 400,000 in repairs, maybe that's where the 50 could come from. I'll leave it to you. Maybe you don't want to do it, that's fine too. But I'd like to see us start some way of connecting neighborhoods. Uh, I think in future planning, that's the way we need to go.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. With the additional account for the, the bike, hike and sidewalk, uh, we can certainly, as a team, sit down to look at how we can, uh, fit that into the budget at the board's pleasure. And with the capital funds, uh, it's a point well taken, the additional funds being returned to the general fund, uh, as, as there was monies set aside for the senior center and funds set aside for property acquisition, we would be able to set aside funds into the capital account, provided there is a specified reason, uh, which, which is required under Ohio Revised Code, which that reason could be construction of a new facility, for example, or improvement of an existing facility. Uh, the capital funds could be used for that. So it, it would be possible, uh, for additional amounts to be reserved for those capital expenditures.
Right. And I also know that 50,000 isn't gonna do it, but I'm thinking maybe then if we have a project, we can do it over two years. And then, uh, but I think we should, the reason we always have for not doing is we don't have an account for. So I'd like to at least start an account and even if it takes us multiple years, at least we're starting to address that, uh, planning this. Uh, Mr. Simcoe, do you have any comments on the general fund?
Uh, well, the only comment is, uh, following up on what you were saying, John, is that that's been kind of a active of mine in trying to, uh, develop some better bike ways, especially in the eastern parts of the township. It's easier to do it when we're, you know, developing out, pushing out west, which is our, our natural growth, obviously, but for, uh, an example for me is, is I was going home the other day on Flanders Road, which is a, a county road and there's a hill there, uh, near my street. I'm coming up the hill and here comes some, uh, young, you know, kind of a young kid, uh, driving, riding his bike, you know, coming at me and he's coming up the hill from one side and I'm coming up from the other side. And there was, you know, I had to swerve some to avoid him. There's just no, you know, bike paths there on one side of the road. And it'd be nice for us to find ways to on some of these like connector roads, uh, to, to, you know, make them safer for bikers. And I'm not talking about down into the neighborhood, because those aren't as heavily traveled, but you know, coming out of some of the streets that feed into Flanders, for example. And I, and I'm not just picking Flanders, there's other places. And, uh, maybe we could try to utilize some of that money, the general fund, to look at the older section of the township to see where we might be able to, that's expensive to do. I mean, I talked to Rob about this and, and, uh, and, and Rob knows, I mean, this isn't, it's easier to do it when you're moving west, because you're developing and you could plan and build it in. But it's harder when you're in existing, you know, roadway, uh, to, to, to put this in. It's just not cheap, but it might be an opportunity for us to enhance some of our, uh, you know, more, a little bit older neighborhood. So I like that, that's a great idea, John Crandall. That's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Genuine, are you on the phone yet? Apparently not, all right. So we'll move to the, uh, general public questions. Please give us your name and address, and if you have any comments at all on the road fund, fire fund, police fund or the general fund. Okay, hearing no comments, I'll move to we adjourn at 10:07.
Second.
I'll, I'll call the roll, uh, Mr. Uh, Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Gentleman, no, I'm sorry, I'm Mr. Crandall.
Yes. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate all the inputs from the department heads and the financial work on these budgets. Thank you very much.
Likewise, all thanks. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.